Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance of the flag. Madam, click what you call the role, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morseberger.
Present.
Ms. Dooley. Dr. Craft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever. Mr. Morris.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passed. Now, this time, we will have comments from the community. If you'd like to sign up to speak, I think the signup sheet is at the podium. And when you come forward, please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak. So, does anyone would like to come forward this time before I transition to Zoom? I think it's Sandra Poe. Well, that's Zoom. Go ahead, Shannon. You're the first one in person.
Good evening, Dr. Gurley and members of the board. I am coming before you tonight as a voice for the many, many emails, phone calls, and conversations I've had with staff members that are concerned about the lack of COVID leave. This is by far the greatest concern I have heard from staff as CEA president this year. Staff is currently required to quarantine for five days, which helps keep us all healthy. However, we are also required to use our sick days. One COVID quarantine wipes out half of your year's sick days. And we work in germ factories. And that's if you feel well enough to return after five days. Several brand-new staff have already gone unpaid for quarantine that is mandated because they haven't accrued enough sick days. This is a hardship for many staff and is a problem you have the power to fix. At the encouragement of AEA, Almaral gave all staff five extra sick days awarded at the beginning of the school year to help cover necessary quarantine periods, as well as to encourage staff who are sick to stay home. I think we learned a lot about caring for our community during the last few years. CEA would like to see you put that into action. Either put COVID leave back in place or give us five sick days provided to all staff immediately. In addition, any new staff who have gone unpaid because of quarantine, their absences need to be paid. Please make that right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Killian. Mr. Benjamin Hayes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to say thank you and want to offer support from my wife and I for your thoughtful approach to the beginning of the all-away-all-day cellphone policy that you've initiated this year. My wife Emily and I have two students at CHS, a ninth and 10th grader. And just comparing last year to this year, the overall drop in screen time from our 10th grader who was a 9th grader last year, as well as just the lack of random texts at odd times of the year has been surprisingly wonderful start to the year. We've also heard from several other of our friends who are teachers at this school that they've seen increased student interaction and participation just in the first couple of weeks. Given that this school's primary role is to educate our children, I want to encourage you to continue to refine but remain committed to the all, sorry, away-all-day philosophy. Whether that enhancement includes the yonder pouches you all are investigating or other nuances to it. There's a broad and growing amount of research that supports this approach. Jonathan Haidt published an article this summer in The Atlantic, also published other places, that just kind of accumulates an increasing number of studies on the mental health decline, decrease in learning, and loss of belonging that's attributable to cellphone use of our students, of our kids, in the past decade. My own work teaching engineering to architects at UVA confirms that cellphones generally do more harm than good in the classroom. Finally, from a personal standpoint, one of our children has some significant educational needs, and we've heard from several of his specialists that his engagement this year, by having his phone away, he uses it as a crutch, as do many children who don't have educational needs, they use phones as a crutch. His conversation and engagement in classes with his peers has increased pretty dramatically. It's a huge life skill that he needs to build, and the current approach to significantly limiting cellphone usage in the school is really helping him build that. Cellphones are amazing, helpful communication devices for connecting with others, but they don't need to be in classrooms. You have my wife and my full support, as well as tremendous number of our friends who we've been in communication with these first few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Next, we have Mr. Jason Halbert.
Hi. Thanks, members of the board. Jason Halbert, 2633 Jefferson Park Circle. I too emphatically support the off-and-away cellphone policy for the students. I'm not sure about the yonder pouches, but I'll let you guys sort that out. I think a whole year of off-and-away with some incentives for the kids and backing up the teachers and administration with enforcement would be great. I have three kids in city schools, two of which are affected by this policy. Like the previous speaker, we've noticed a change in terms of usage and behavior, and I agree with all of the research about the negative effects. I think classrooms should be revered spaces where students know they're there to learn. Just a space where those things are off and away. If my phone rang right now and I got it out and answered the call, everybody would just be like, what's he doing? So, the school classroom should be a place where they're not there. I agree with people who say that there's a level of communication necessary with kids during the day, and I think that exceptions can be made. Kids can communicate with their teachers, or they can do what I had to do when I was in high school. Get a pass, go to the office, and use the landline. Huh? A landline? What's that? I think that's it. I hope you stick it out despite the complaints, and I hope it serves as a useful change to the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halbert. Ian Garcia.
Good evening, France. I'm Erin Garcia. I've had kids in the school system for 12 or so years, and it is, I think you've probably heard from me this week, a great honor. I am passionate about the school system and what you all are doing here, and these teachers, bless them. I have a lot of teacher friends, and seeing teachers come back from COVID where kids were on screens all of the time is remarkable, and to see what they've had to deal with. I hear from my kids, who are in 9th grade and 11th grade, both here, proud Black Knights, that they, last year, you know, kids always had earbuds in their ears, and I just lose my mind thinking about what must that be like to teach these children? So, the fact that you're putting time, energy, and a lot of resources into it really is an amazing thing, and I do appreciate it so very much. As we talk about in our family, we have lots of regulations around screen, and it's screens, and it still feels like an epidemic even in our home with only two children, and our children, not the only ones. We have the same problem. And so, if my husband and I, who have fully-developed brains, don't know how to deal with it, I can only imagine what 1,400 or so students are trying to do. Like my friends have already, or my colleagues and friends and fellow parents have already said, the difference of last year and this year is remarkable with our own two kids. Now, there are only two of them, so it's not a full scope of the issue, but they were coming home from both Buford and CHS with around four hours of screen time during the school day. I put as many stops on our phones as possible, but at some point, I just can't control what's happening here, and I don't know how you do either. So, I'm not saying I have answers. But digging deep and getting into this, I think, is a really, really wonderful thing. So, we call it an epidemic. When we told our oldest that this was going to happen, he said, "Cannot happen." It is not humanly possible that you're going to, that this is going to be able to be fulfilled. And I thought, well, that's a really interesting thing. He said, "People are going to skip class. It's not going to be doable." And not even our kids think it can happen, which I really think is sad. So, again, I don't have the answers, but I thought that that was a really interesting piece. And now, he's kind of, he's toned it down a little bit because I think that he is seeing some changes. I would imagine it's not perfect quite yet, but I do think that the energy and time that you all are putting into this is really wonderful. Is yonder the answer? I will let the experts and you all that are doing your deep dive go further with that. But I do know that the ability to put stops on things is really hard for some, for kids who are in the 14- to 18-year-old age range. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Is anyone else in the room who would like to come forth and speak? Just state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Greg Frank, Schultz School resident and proud parent of a 9th grader. I'm here to talk to you about measures to manage student discipline at CHS. And I want to ask a few questions in order to provide a more stable learning environment for everybody else. I understand there's a group of about 100 students who simply do not go to class. They come to the building, but they just don't go to class. Some don't come to the building at all. And I want to ask, what are the consequences for not attending class? Whatever the consequences should be, they're not applied consistently. And it underserves the needs of those students who really need boundaries and perhaps come from families where there aren't enough boundaries, and it also underserves the rest of the students who have a distracted administration that's dealing with discipline problems, and they react to the discipline problems, and as a result, they don't have enough capacity to deal with the normal running of the school and have to take reactive measures like, for example, truncating class times, getting rid of BKT times. That results in people, instead of being able to do in-person lab work, they have to now do virtual lab work all because of inability to manage student discipline. I want to find out why there is such inconsistent application of discipline, because I think it really affects teacher morale, too. Right now, I'm not sure whether you're aware, but I think the teacher morale is probably at an all-time low at CHS. And it's because of student discipline, and that affects recruiting and a lot of things. I have a few other questions. Should students released from Blue Ridge Juvenile Detention Center for Criminal Acts start first at Luga McGinnis before returning to the general population at CHS, particularly when firearms were involved? Because we have such a case right now, and I'm sure I don't need to remind you that that's a very significant liability issue should, God forbid, something happen here. Another question is, shouldn't more than one person, a very busy administrator, have the ability to adjust the number of students allowed in a class, especially during this tumultuous first few days of the year, to be able to help more students get into their sections? All of that work funneled through one person, and that's very, very overloaded person, and that has created quite a lot of disruption for many students. Another question is, why are we still missing a biology teacher? The students involved just have to watch movies every day with a sequence of different substitutes. Now, it's hard to recruit good teachers right now at the best of times, but with teacher morale pretty low, it's even harder to recruit good teachers. What can we do about that? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Young man in front, if you'd like to come.
Hello. My name is Logan Martin. I live in Charlottesville. I'm a senior at CHS. I'm here today to share some of my thoughts on the cellphone policy and fights at CHS. I'd like to preface my statements by thanking Dr. Gurley and Dr. Odie. I sent an email yesterday requesting to have a place on the cellphone committee. They responded quickly, and I look forward to future discussions. I'd like to thank Mr. Jocelyn, who I emailed and spoke with recently as well. My knowledge of the cellphone policy is that of personal experience and some conversations with students and staff. It's obvious, as many have said, that this issue is complicated. I feel as though there is no one-size-fits-all solution, and that context matters. I asked that phones be allowed during breakfast and lunchtime. That seemed to be, that seemed to be one of the biggest complaints I've heard from students, that they are not allowed to use them at that time. I'd also like to say that the current cellphone policy is flawed in its own right. Not only is it nearly impossible to enforce, as evident as a student at CHS, but various classes at CHS require the use of phones and/or personal devices. It is counterintuitive to say "off and away," but then also require me to use my phone. To give an example, and to be as brief as I can, to enroll into PVCC for dual enrollment classes, I need to use a personal email. The school emails are deleted after graduation. The school Chromebooks don't allow me to log into a personal email, and thus, I must use a personal device, such as a phone, to log into PVCC. Now, I'll speak on fights at CHS. From what I recall, fights usually happen during transition times for lunch. The issues of fights at CHS will be there whether or not phones are off and away. Fights, of course, are a personal matter. It is not my business to know the why behind the fights at CHS, but I do wonder. And I feel more could be done on a personal level. Nobody should be denied their right to education, yet the education of others should not be diminished either. I do not have a solution, but what we have right now is not working. Time is limited. Today, I'm limited to three minutes, but my time at CHS is two. I have the utmost respect for those in this room today, those who have dedicated a great portion of their time to bettering a community, this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Logan. If I'm going to transition to Zoom, I think we have two people in the Zoom room waiting, and I'll come back. MJ Smith is scheduled to speak. Is MJ Smith in the room? Please raise your hand.
Yep. Again, I'll just ask anybody who's in attendees gallery to raise their hand or chat message. Once I see that hand raised, I will promote you to be able to speak as a panelist for three minutes. And we have the user listed as Krista Bennett. Krista, I've seen you, and I've just promoted you. You should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Great. Thanks so much. I'm Krista. I live at 106 True Court, and I have a 9th grader and a 10th grader and a 5th grader. Are you guys able to hear me okay? No.
Can't hear you.
Try again. I'm trying to raise your volume as loud as possible.
Okay. Are you guys able to hear me now? Okay. I'm Krista. I live at 106 True Court. I have a 10th grader and a 5th grader, and I'd like to start by thanking all of you, our teachers, our administrators, administrators, and our school board for helping us get off to a great start to the school year. I have a couple of things that I want to highlight tonight. The first is I want to give a shout-out to the UVA Athletics, or I'm sorry, the CHS Athletics Department, and I'm glad I can be on camera. So, I want to show you something. So, I got this at my daughter's school hockey game on Tuesday night, and it has our roster and team pictures of all of our fall teams, and it's just so great to have this. I knew it seems like it's something that's small, that's little, but I think it communicates to our students that they have our support and our investment, and their time and their talent. And I'm just so thankful for the Athletics Department. It's been obvious that they're doing a lot to improve communications, and I really appreciate it. And then, second, I want to express my support for the Phones Away policy, although I really appreciate hearing from that student in some of the ways that perhaps we want to tweak it. And I also want to voice my strong opposition to using yonder pouches that make phones inaccessible during the day. And I have a couple of concerns. The first is our student safety. The threat of school shootings is something that every parent and child lives with every day. There are also other security concerns that affect students, and as a parent, I want my child to have access to contacting me in an emergency. Second, there's a need for more community-engaged process. I've been a CCS parent since 2013. Our district has made a lot of progress towards more transparent decision-making processes, and the board has really done a great job there. I so appreciate your leadership and those efforts. I don't think that we've achieved that transparency and that community feedback with this yet. I'm really glad to hear that there's a cellphone committee. I'll contact some folks to see if there's one that parents can join as well. I'm really glad to hear that we're hearing from students, especially a representative sample of students, about how it affects them and kind of their thoughts of how we can do it best. So, ask the board to please reconsider the implementation of the pouches until more members of our community have been engaged with this process of deciding this policy. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Do we have anyone else in the Zoom?
We do. The next person is listed as Sandra Aviles, and I will promote you to panelist. You should be able to unmute and talk for three minutes.
Hi. Thank you so much. Good evening, Dr. Gurley, members of the board. My name is Sandra Avalos Poe, 617 West Main Street. I'm the community organizer with Charlottesville United for Public Education, and we're excited to announce that we're planning to host a school board candidate forum and participate, sorry, I'm sorry, in partnership with Charlottesville tomorrow and with support from Charlottesville Inclusive Media. We're still working out the finalized location and the date, but it's going to take place either the second or third week of October, and we will have more details coming up on that soon. I also wanted to let everyone know who's tuned in that there will be an affordable housing rally at Tonsler Park, 500 Cherry Avenue, on September 16th at 4:00 PM. Housing is essential to all human beings, and because of that, housing is a human right and shouldn't be a stressor that our Charlottesville City School students should ever have to deal with. Thank you, guys, so much for your continued work and support, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Poe, for providing us with that information. Do we have anyone else? Before we move on with agendas, anyone else in the room who'd like to come forth and speak? At this time, you'll have an opportunity later in the agenda to speak, if you'd like. Thank you. So, next on our agenda, the student and staff recognitions. Ms. Chuck.
Good evening. I'm rallying my people around me right now. Ms. Becker, if you don't mind loading the first set of slides about the Shannon Grants. We have a few representatives in front of us, of our staff, who earned one of the Edgar and Eleanor Shannon Grants that are so generous to support Charlottesville and Almaral teachers. We have Catherine Gray from Clark, I believe, is the sole member who was able to join us this evening. So, Catherine, do you mind just saying a quick word about what your project is?
Sure. So, this was my second year in a row receiving Shannon Grant, so I'm very thankful. Last year, Clark received a school-wide $5,000 grant for student-initiated community service projects, which is great. And everyone should come look at Clark and see all the cool things that kids have done there and in the community. And then, this year, my colleague Katie Williams and I received a Shannon Grant for our ESL program and for getting more hands-on materials to help push students to use English in science and engineering.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I misspoke. We do have a second representative. We have folks from K-Tech here who are now part of our family or increasingly part of our family, so we wanted to ask them to come share their good news with us as well. Dr. Helt, and I believe this might be Mr. Morris? All right. Do you want to tell them about it?
Okay. So, Mr. Morris, he submitted a proposal called "Strike Up the Band." So, he actually was delivered yesterday, received a huge bandsaw that can cut wood and metal, and he said it was like Christmas. And so, he's working to share that love for that huge massive piece of equipment with his students, and so, we're looking forward to that. Do you have anything to add?
No. I just wanted to thank everybody for it, and the cellphone policy is amazing.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And thanks. Thanks to them for coming, and thanks also to the Shannon Grant Foundation. All right. The next group are three staff members who, over the summer, have earned some national recognition in various ways. And so, Ms. Drain, if you don't mind stepping forward, one of the 11 national winners of outstanding special education teacher.
Hi, everybody. I actually didn't know I was going to have to say anything, but I am deeply honored to represent Charlottesville, Virginia, and of course, special education. This is a field I'm super passionate about being in, and it's just really great to be able to represent this Charlottesville City Schools, as well as lots of other meaningful things. So, thank you all so much for the recognition.
Congratulations.
Bianca might be next. Yep. Bianca Johnson earned a scholarship through the Bureau of Justice Assistance to reserve her certificate in restorative justice facilitation and leadership. You may know she's been increasingly doing this work for us, and so, this will just be another area of support and expertise for her. Anything to say? Actually, the program is underway.
I wasn't expecting to speak, but I am excited to learn and share my knowledge, both with CCS and our Charlottesville community.
Congratulations.
And lastly, Dr. And lastly, Dr. Jeanie Fouts spent some time in the, in the Philippines this summer through fellowship with the US State Department, working with fellow educators around literacy projects there.
Thank you all so much. One thing that was really fascinating about working in the Philippines was the strong organization between like the local schools and the universities there. So I worked with university partners and teachers. And so it gave me some good ideas for ways that we can think about that in the future. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Just congratulations to all. We are so, we're better because you are part of us.
Congratulations to each and every one of you. Okay, moving on. The next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I will move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion pass.
All right, Mr. Chair, we will now have our items for discussion. We will first have Dr. Odie, who will be accompanied, I think by Mr. Pitt, with our student reps for the school board for the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Gurley, good evening. I am, did we see Mr. Pitt back there? Maybe he hasn't come yet, but we will carry on because we've got some great students here today that we're going to recognize. So I'll start by just letting you know that we have three young ladies who will be our student representatives this year. I'm going to call them up. I'm going to read a bit of, I asked them to share some things with me that they do, that they're involved with. And I'm going to read those things when I call them up and I'm going to have them remain. And then after I've introduced all three of them, then perhaps we can have a picture with the board chair and vice chair and Dr. Gurley. All right. So tonight we have with us first, Ms. Jayla Turner. Come on up, Jayla. And as she's coming, I'll read what she shared with me. Jayla is the only majorette in the CHS marching knights. On her own time, she practices the baton to grow her skill. She is also a part of the wind ensemble. The instrument she plays is the clarinet. I always wanted to play that, by the way. She loves making paper cranes. Origami is something she taught herself how to do when she was just eight years old. Last year, she was the freshman student council president for the school. She has a fascination with music and one day, she hopes to be able to create her own piece of music to share with the world. Jayla Turner. Next, we have Ms. Maggie Hayfee. Maggie is currently a senior at CHS and has loved being a part of the Black Knight community for the past four years. She is the only girl on a public school varsity baseball team in the state of Virginia. As well as a member of the varsity girls' basketball team. She is also an editor in chief for the nighttime review, the school's newspaper, and has a great passion for journalism. Maggie was elected the 11th grade class president last year and is currently running for reelection this year. Around the school, many people know her as Swaggy Maggie, as she always does her best to put her heart and soul into school spirit for CHS. Usually, you can see Maggie decked out in black and orange during spirit weeks. Maggie Hayfee. And lastly, we have Raquel or Kells Allen. Kells works two jobs. She worked over the summer at the Boys and Girls Club of Cherry Avenue. And now she works there after school until basketball starts. She also works at the new Raising Cane's restaurant. Kells is a school ambassador and is running for school president. In 2021, she was first team all district and second team all region. In 2022 and in 2023, she was first team all district, first team all region, and had an honorable mention in all state. Kells wants to go to a, in historically black college or university or HBCU to study psychology to help with the mental health crisis. She wants to return to her community once basketball isn't for her anymore and help build the kids in the Seville community up mentally. She is very excited to be a part of this team and is here to work and give insights from a black student's life. She wants to provide perspective and help fix the big issues we have. Kells Allen. So it looks like we have another outstanding group of student representatives this year. Jayla will be our first representative for this year and we welcome her. She'll be sitting, I think, next, next month, right? Next month at five o'clock, you'll come, we'll have a space for you to sit and we welcome your voice and input. So if you're all okay, we're ready for a picture with our beautiful young ladies. Come on up here. So now that we've gotten our picture and we've made it official, I do ask that the superintendent recommends that you take action on these three lovely ladies for tonight.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion pass. Congratulations.
All right, welcome ladies.
Best student reps.
Dr. Odie will remain and we will, she will bring forth a revisions to policy JFC.
I was so excited. I'm so sorry. All right. So good evening again. Now, I will be sharing with you a policy revision. As Dr. Gurley mentioned, we're talking about policy JFC, which is student conduct. You may recall that this policy JFC was revised earlier this year based on VSBA recommendations. During that time, old language such as beeper was removed from the policy. Now we are presenting it with our new cellphone expectations included. You see it on the screen before you underline, this language matches what we have in the students' rights and responsibilities as well. At this time, the superintendent recommends that the school board take action to approve revised policy JFC.
Do we have a motion?
A move that we approve the policy as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
I will have Ms. Hoover. She will come forward and give us a middle school project update as well as some recommendations for the FY24 budget actions for schools construction. It's just a lot to say.
That's a lot of words, a lot of words. Good evening, Chairman Bryment, members of the board and Dr. Gurley. This evening I'll share some photos of the middle school project and I'll be bringing forward to budget actions or recommendations for you to consider next month. This first photo is the middle school project now underway. Here you see the backside of the gym, the football field and track are now completely gone. There's been significant earthwork in the area behind the gym building and the Boys and Girls Club. Here you can see some of the excavation and preparations for the geothermal wells. This is another look at the preparation site for the geothermal wells. The vehicles and the equipment in this photo gives some perspective as to how much excavating is involved in this area of the job site. This is a view looking up from the old gym building towards building A. All trees are removed from this area inside the construction fence. And here's another view of the same area, but looking down towards the gym building and Boys and Girls Club. Again, you can see all the trees are down and you can see some of the debris from the old breezeways. And you can see the beginning of the work, earthwork in the area. And this next is the aerial view from the job site camera. You can see where we were at at the end of July and how things look at, as of August 29th. August 29th happens to be the exact date the demolition permit was issued by the city. So we can now say the confidence that the gym demolition will be completed this month. And it will be exciting to look at the views from this camera in the coming months. All right. So now the budget recommendations. This is the first of two recommendations for the fiscal year 2024 budget. The first action is to authorize fund balance to support the school construction during the development of the city's FY24 capital improvement program. City and school staff were closely together to identify ways to bring forward funding for CCS to help cover the middle school construction cost in the face of the continuing inflation pressures. CCS proposed 1.5 million of the school's fund balance to assist in the funding of the construction. And subsequent to that, we were awarded the School Construction Assistance Program that we applied for and was awarded 17.5 million. See, staff recommends that the school board proceed with authorizing the 1.5 million from the fund balance to support the school construction. However, we're asking that the board designate these funds to support the new preschool center in order to complete the longstanding school board vision for reconfiguration of Charlottesville City Schools to better serve our students. The next action is to amend our FY24 budget for the SCAP grant. This, the state grant was 17,562,682 dollars that was awarded to us on May 11th by the State Board of Education. Only CCS can submit the grant reimbursements to VDOE. That's the reason we're asking to amend our budget. And given the significant amount of funding involved, the school board must amend our FY24 budget to recognize and account for these funds. And then we will also ask, once the board takes action, we will ask the city to amend their budget. So here's a summary of the two board actions that we'll be bringing back next month for you to take action on. Are there any questions?
I'll start to the left. Stories, do you have any questions?
Please, thank you, sir. So just for clarification, that 1,500 is going to be designated solely for preschool, for new preschool?
Yes, that's what we're asking the, the school board to make that designation.
So it goes to the city and it's going to sit in the CAP but be designated for the preschool.
Construction.
Okay. And then the 17 million, the SCAP grant, I know that that was great, is great. And that allows us to kind of check all the boxes and do all of the things that, that we had hoped to do for the middle school. Do we know yet if all of those funds have been used or, or where, you know, where are we at as far as anything left over from that?
You mean as far as the 17, that will be applied all to the middle school project and we anticipate drawing all that funding down this year.
So all of that, okay. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
And Dr. Craft?
And so have, we have not yet received that 17 million?
We won't, it will be a drawdown, a reimbursement. We first have to pay the bills to get reimbursed.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Ms. Morris?
Quick question in regards to the fund balance. Once we transfer the 1.5, where would that leave us?
It'll leave us about $800,000 in our fund balance. We haven't fully closed this fiscal year. We do anticipate adding to it, but currently it would be about 800,000.
Thank you. Ms. Stooly? Ms. McCabe? You have one other question?
Yeah, sorry, to tag on to Mr. Morris. Now, weren't some of those funds going to be? Oh gosh, I don't remember how we spoke about that before, but weren't they related to some of the other projects that we, that we were doing? And we were applying for either grant money or funding for some of the roof work? I mean, it was CAP money that I thought we were going to be able to reallocate and that's where that money was coming from.
We have ARPA money that we're applying to the HVAC projects that actually freed up some money. And the ARPA SIR funding that free grant funding, we're drawing down, which will come back to us through gain share. We'll also, we'll make a designation or a request that that be applied to the CAP. If that's what you're referring to.
I think so. So it's basic, we're basically just shuffling money. We're using. But I just wanted to make sure I remembered, I mean, that we were using some of that. I didn't mean for that to sound shady or anything, but.
We, we haven't lost sight of that.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
More questions?
Thank you. It'll be Ms. Hoover again, then she will give us a 2425 budget calendar. No, not this, it's for information. We'll do that next month. All right. The next one is the budget calendar.
So the, the, you have the draft or proposed calendar. It's following the same format as we have done in years past. It's the outline of our budget work sessions and our budget meetings to begin and continue the work of the FY25 budget development. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Stories?
Yeah, so just reflecting back that previously, years, years ago, we used to do two by twos with some of the staff. And I know that we've had last year that we did have this meeting, the five o'clock meeting. I guess it's slated for October 19th. And I just was. And I just was curious to get a sense from the rest of the board if you felt like you like that option versus something else, or I don't know. I think I felt like I was better prepared with the two by twos, and I don't know why, maybe that's just me. But to call a meeting and have us come in here. So, I don't know what I'm asking, but.
Are you asking if, if we would like to instate the two by twos as part of the process?
Yeah, I don't know if there's pros or cons to either, but I, I felt like to just bring, bring the list, I don't know, I felt like it was a more robust discussion. And again, maybe that's on me, you know, and I just need to make, when I had the two by twos as opposed to the format that we used last year. And maybe it's a scheduling thing, you know, and just freeing up staff. And it worked better to do it in a public meeting, I don't know.
I think part of the process last school year, we sent out, and someone from staff can, Ms. Hoover's not here, oh. It's been a long day. I believe last school year, we sent out a survey and what, to those board members. And then what we did was, we can, we went through and we, to look for if there were any trends in the survey data. And then we brought that back. I thought we brought that back to you and said, would, these are some of the things that we're seeing in terms of budget development. So I think that that, maybe that's the part you're saying, did that part work? You know, did that part work for you? Because I think that's what we did, we brought that back to you all. That was, so previously you did two by twos. And then last school year, what we did was, there was a survey, what you would like to see in the budget, your priorities. Then the team compiled that information and brought it to the budget work session.
I just think it's really important to have a work session type rather than school board. And I think that's a big difference, like this is not conducive to discussion. I think a work session model where we are more in like talking mode rather than being talked at mode is very different. And I, I like the public session rather than a two by two. Just ideologically. So I like the survey, I think that was, that worked really well. It was very helpful to kind of move forward. And I liked how early it was because then we could really understand the priorities early on from a staff and division level perspective. And maybe we had some input of our own at that level very early. So I like it, I don't, I think two by twos are difficult on my, from my perspective. And again, I don't think the CH, I'm not going to be able to make that meeting, that's my boy's birthday. So he's not, we're not going, I just refuse any more to go anything on my, on my children's birthday. But I do think the media center is a hard place to have a work session.
No, I, I mean, I agree, I like the work session model. I just, I think the, the meeting that I'm referencing wasn't really a work session though. I mean, I didn't, I don't recall it being set up like a work session. I recall it being.
The two by twos?
No, this on the, on the 19th. It was set up like this and we just kind of came in and, and said, here's what my priorities are for, for next year. And I think the survey was a compilation of what you all had heard from the PTOs as well. So it kind of prioritized some of, some of the things that, that PTOs were bringing forward. And then there was a nice presentation, a robust presentation to us, you know, after all of that was gathered. So I'm fine, I just wasn't sure if, if that meeting on the 19th was.
One of the things that this brings to mind for me is that we are going to have a big transition in school board membership. And I think that it's going to be really important to have formats that invite, that allow for the prospective new board members to be present. And, you know, there, it'll be their first time doing this. And so to me, that would be a priority to have a format that allows them to be here and also maybe to begin to ask questions so that they can begin to get up to speed.
And I just wanted to add too, that I would, I like the work session model. We're kind of all sitting around, you know, the structure's a little different, but I just think it's important for transparency. And then, you know, it's all, we don't have to try to remember what maybe this, you know, like, just having it all in a public forum just keeps everything clean and on the record. So that when we're not, you know, like, so that you don't have to find the person who was there, you can just reference it back, so.
Mr. Morris? Ms. Stooly?
I'm not so much a question, but just a comment as we look at collective bargaining and CEA potentially being elected here in the next few weeks, months, however long that takes, just considering how they fit into this calendar is a consideration as well.
And did you have something like that?
So I'd just like to say that, thank you for your work on this calendar. I would like to propose that we change the location of the October 19th meeting to maybe the Walker cafeteria, if that's available, or some cafeteria space where it's more work session like. And of course, invite any candidates, make sure that, you know, they're available. Obviously, it's a much more casual spot. And, and opportunity for, maybe on the agenda, there can be some public comment. But have, you know, clearly delineated agenda for public comment without it taking over. But yeah, I won't be there. Can you also just maybe make the font a little bit smaller on the leftmost column, there's parts that are cut off?
Okay, well, Ms. McKee has made, guess, the motion? When to act?
We'll take action next month.
Okay, next month.
This was just for information.
Alright, we will now have Dr. Isley with our professional learning update.
Thank you, Dr. Gurley and members of the board. I'm Anna Isley, I think I know everybody, but if not, that's me. And I'm excited to be here to tell you about professional learning here in CCS for the upcoming year. Our professional learning offerings, as you'll see on this slide, highlight the core values of our new strategic plan. So throughout this presentation, you're going to see professional learning sessions that relate to these four core values and certainly align with staff support goal two. All CCS staff will engage in meaningful, relevant, timely and personalized professional learning. So we're really proud and to say here that, that our professional learning plan is multifaceted and then, you know, involves a lot of entry points for staff at the division, school, team and individual level. Specifically for Target Four, I just wanted to reference that one because it is very specific about having at least 10 current employees obtaining their further leadership certification. We do have 10 currently enrolled in Longwood University for an admin program. So they are connected with them some and they are busy getting their hours because this program is a, is a fall, spring and summer program. So they'll be done by the end of next summer and, or slated to be done then. So they're busy with their coursework and getting their internship hours right now. Also, I'll just highlight Target Six to increase the percentage of staff who report that professional learning is effective or highly effective. So I am going to show you some data later, so I just wanted to pinpoint that one as well. But certainly all of those strategies and targets align with the work and will be visible and evident as we work through the program. Alright, so here in CCS, we have a wide variety of options for professional learning and sort of avenues for professional learning, starting at our division-wide PL days. And then we have a lot of ongoing programs, ongoing professional learning happening in our schools, which I'm going to highlight as well and across the division actually. And school-based professional learning and professional learning communities, our PLCs, which are team-based by content or grade level. And then more individualized support through instructional coaching and mentoring. So these are kind of the different areas I'm going to talk through today. So I, I'm going to start off with talking about our Palooza, which was a huge success. We got a lot of really good feedback on about August 16th. So we offered over 130 sessions. And many of those, most of those were, were CCS educators and staff that were presenting, our specialists, our coaches, our coordinators for sure, teachers. So last spring, we had done an all-call for proposals and those were all vetted and organized and arranged for the PL Palooza. So all staff were included in this. So regardless of, of staff's role, they had professional learning sessions to attend. And it was a great celebration and kickoff for our school year, so that was our first division-wide date. And I'm going to highlight a few of the sessions from that next. So I decided to, to focus in on one area, I know there was some, there's been some discussion about professional learning related to differentiation, I think at a previous meeting. So there's, we had a huge catalog of offerings, obviously 130 sessions or more. So just to kind of zero in and give you a sampling of what it looked like. These are just sessions on differentiation that were offered at the August Palooza. So we have outside presenters, we have Chris, Christina Dubay, Christie, she's working with Beaufort School this year. But this session was actually for all staff members, K-12. She did a flexible grouping session with differentiation and engagement. We had Doctors Kenrati and Labette from William &amp; Mary Ann UVA there, working with our Walker teachers this year. But again, this was an open session for everyone on how to access complex texts. So how do we break down and make grade level texts accessible to all students? So we had a wide variety of folks in that one. We certainly had some sessions supporting making content accessible for our English learners. Ms. Raznick has a, an ongoing, and her team, an ongoing series for special education. This one in August focused on specific learning disabilities. And, and again, this is not just for special educators, but for all staff. At our next PL day later this month, it's going to be on other health impairments. But it's sort of a series throughout our professional learning days on a different disability category each time. We have small group planning, our GRTs, we had teachers at the high school presenting on addressing multi-level literacy needs within the class. So this is just sort of one topic, the, the extensive sessions that were offered just at the Palooza. And then of course, you can go to the next slide. We, I just wanted to highlight some of the others, there's no way to capture every topic without just going through the whole catalog. But, you know, we had numerous sessions, equity sessions, restorative practice, family engagement, technology, wellness. We had customer service, Power School, lots of technology, multi-link Google learner sessions, our strategic plan. So we did have coursework engagement so that our staff members who are working on courses on their own were able to have some time to work on those requirements as well. So just a sort of sampling of some of the topics that were offered to show the wide variety that we had. So one thing we definitely want to do is get that feedback. And what, you know, our Palooza, one of the big goals was to, to get everyone excited for the school year and feel energized and enthused. So at the time that I collected the, the data, put this slide in, we had 174 responses. And what you'll notice is that, you know, over 80%, I want to say it right, at 82% answered in the affirmative that they were energized and inspired for the year and couldn't wait after the Palooza, which we thought was really strong and especially to only have, you know, just three, three and a half percent in the negative. So we felt really good about how, how much that event really prepped and excited people for the year to come. And then on the next slide, you're going to see a similar question, which was, to what extent were the sessions you attended valuable, useful and relevant? So we want our teachers and staff to feel like the professional learning they're getting is effective and important and valuable. So again, over 70%, 71% answered in the affirmative that it was extremely relevant or useful or a four. And just 10 individuals less than, you know, about six, 5.8%, I think, were in the negative. So we felt like we're on a really good start here with professional learning for this year and the response to it. So this was just one day, the Palooza was just one of our division days. But we have several to go, September 29th later this month. Deep into the planning stages of that and organizing sessions, we've got lots of great sessions coming in. And our theme for these remaining three dates is lowering the barriers, not the bar. And so we really are focusing on how we can support all of our, help, help our teachers and our staff members support all of our students and, and eliminating those barriers and holding high expectations for all of our students. In addition to these division days, because we know there's only, there's just a few of those throughout the year, we do have a lot of ongoing professional learning that's happening. And I wanted to highlight a few of those. So Doctors Kenrati and Labette, who I mentioned earlier, who did a session for all, and also Dr. Dubay, they're working specifically with the Walker and, and Beaufort literacy teams. So this is ongoing throughout this entire year. They have done some scaffolding, complex texts and some planning sessions with them already. But they will be in PLCs, this work involves walkthroughs and feedback in the schools. So it's kind of comprehensive throughout, you know, throughout the year. We're on year two of working with Skip Tyler with the Beaufort math team. And it's kind of a similar thing, just this ongoing professional learning that's happening in the teams and on our professional learning days. I wanted to also highlight an example, so all of, you know, our schools have school-based professional learning that they offer as well, that our instructional coaches are a vital part of, of providing along with teachers at this individual site. So I've checked in some with CHS and I wanted to highlight their plan. They have a sustained plan for professional learning that involves instructional rounds. So this is just one school's approach, but the focus is on differentiation and engagement strategies. So the idea in a plan like this is that the strategy is taught and it's practiced and implemented. And then there's some peer observation and walkthrough feedback that goes with it. So this is kind of cyclical throughout the entire year and they've got the coaches and, and some of the, the leadership and teachers involved there. I know again, that there was some discussion around support for our secondary schools related to differentiation. So we have also reached out to Dr. Carol Tomlinson to see if she can advise us a little bit on the planning aspects of that. And actually, my background too, I teach a graduate differentiating instruction course. So I'm supporting the instructional coaches as well, who are, who are going to be in our schools in that arena. And more ongoing professional learning, we have Dr. Sean Woodley, who I know many people got to see as our keynote speaker for the Palooza. He is doing some continuous work with Walker and Beaufort also, some culturally relevant teaching strategies, evidence-based strategies, sessions with the whole staff, but also some sessions to support leadership and teacher and instructional leaders in the building. There's some coaching and training sessions that give them feedback as well after observations. I'm really excited about to share our letters numbers. So you know, this is part of the science of reading, letters is our primary teacher sort of course that we have cohorts. And we've been doing this for a couple of years now. So we have about 50 people, a little more than 50 enrolled right now in Letters One or Letters Two. So again, this is on the science of reading. By the end of this year, assuming those, those individuals all complete the cohort, this is the percentage of teachers that we'll have that will be trained. 100% of our kindergarten teachers and our elementary instructional coaches, 95% of reading specialists, nearly all of our elementary principals and 80% of our first and second grade teachers. So that's not exhaustive, there's other, other individuals such as, you know, ESL teachers or third grade teachers that have also gone through, but the focus, and this is the primary. So we're excited about the number of teachers that will have been through this. And this is an ongoing year-long course and, and we're able to weave it and incorporate it into professional learning days as well. Of course, we also have school-based professional learning. So as I mentioned earlier, I gave the CHS example, so. So different schools have different professional learning that they're doing as part of faculty meetings or during professional learning communities. Our instructional coaches are vital in delivering that professional learning and that's really school-based and school, you know, focused on the school needs. And then certainly in professional learning communities, that's our grade level or content area teams. Instructional coaches are part of that, along with specialists such as math specialists or reading specialists. They're working on a lot of analyzing student work, planning next steps, learning together. Sometimes there's, you know, deliberate intentional professional learning embedded there as well, or they're following up on professional learning and collaboration. So that's another thing that's, that's continuous that teachers are getting, that's really job embedded. And then, you know, I just mentioned the coaches supporting the professional learning. They're sort of at various levels here, both the professional, the school-based and division-based professional learning and certainly the PLCs. But they also offer a lot of individual support. So this is kind of, you know, when we look at professional learning at the division level, the school level, the team level, and then also supporting individuals, making sure that we're differentiating our professional learning. We have a graduated model where new teachers get, you know, brand, brand-new teachers actually have a mentor and they work with instructional coach. And then as the next years progress, there's coaching cycles with the instructional coaches. So coaches work with all the new teachers and individual coaching cycles. They give observations, they are able to model, co-teach, plan together, give feedback. Actually, all of our instructional coaches are being PSYOP trained. It's a four-part series, but it's a, an approach, a framework to support English learners and gaining academic language while also being able to meet grade level content. So it's helpful for all learners and they're going to be able to train others and use those strategies in their schools. We have novice teacher mentors also. They've been through a training. We partnered with George Mason to provide that. And they have one to two novice teachers that they're working with in the schools. It's a little bit more informal, but regular check-ins throughout the whole year and really support the teacher's professional growth. So they have lots of support. All right. So we are excited about how comprehensive this plan is and how, you know, we're addressing the wide variety of needs at, at all the different levels and looking at it from the perspective of the school or the division, excuse me, all the way down to the individuals. So I'm happy to answer any questions or if anybody has any.
Over to my right. Any questions?
I didn't realize my microphone was on. Hi, Dr. Isley, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Thank you for taking on this role. You know, the key is really the results, right? How are you measuring the results? Like obviously I don't feel like SOLs are like, this is the result. Maybe that's how the vision measures it, fine. But like, how are you measuring yourself and your results?
Yeah, that's a good question. Certainly, you know, I mean, on the division days, there's obviously feedback. You know, there's like surveys and those types of things. Coaches often give, ask for feedback. We do, you know, I support that team and I was an instructional coach. And you know, we, we seek feedback from staff on the effectiveness of our professional learning. Certainly it's evident when you do walkthroughs and observations, because if you see those practices in play, then you know, that, you know that they've, they're being used and yeah, and it's, and it's working. So I, you know, it's not a, oh, this one measure will tell us whether, you know, we've, we've done our job. I think we definitely want for staff to feel like it's effective. But we certainly, and that's why these cycles and these ones that are focused on rounds are the ongoing one, because we, you really can see that progress over time or the implementation of strategies over time. So it will be a combination of feedback, surveys of observations and certainly the student achievement data is part of that. And I would say teacher retention as well.
I'm, I think you're really uniquely positioned for this role, just having served in various capacities in the division. And so I'm excited to see this, this progress. I'm very excited to see PSYOP on these slides. And then hopefully we can continue to expand that beyond coaches as we move forward. And, and yeah, I think just knowing how we can support you, finding the balance between having a plan in place that is aligned with our strategic plan while still remaining flexible as, you know, student data comes back. I'm hoping that we'll get MAP and PALS results at our meeting next month. You know, so how can we again, plan but remain flexible? And responding to needs so that, yeah, teachers are able to, I don't know, respond and get what they need for the students that are in their classroom right now instead of, you know, waiting a year.
Yeah, and I'll be part of the school success meetings too. So when we're going around to schools, I mean, that's additional to, you know, just another, another piece of this where, you know, we are hearing individual needs or seeing data and we can be responsive to that. But you're right, you have to be both proactive and responsive. So I'm prepared and, and ready for that.
Mr. Morris.
I just wanted to focus on the, the feedback a little bit. Would that be our baseline for Target Six as we move forward for the strategic plan over the course of five years?
That's a really good question. I, I don't know if, you know, I know that the, the goal in the strategic plan has, was very specific about the effectiveness and wanting to see that data. So I don't know if, when that was designed, if there are other, you know, there may be other measures from, from prior to that. I will tell you that, you know, it's, this is the first time that we had everybody back together for a full day of professional learning. And certainly it's the kickoff of the school year and there's, you know, a lot of excitement around it as well. So I am very hopeful that the results continue to grow, but also understand that, you know, that was, that was the beginning of the year and we go through, you know, the course of the school year. We'll see, we'll see if that stays, stays where it is. But I, I think, you know, I don't know, Dr. I don't know if Dr. Gurley has another plan for that or Dr. Odie. But I'll certainly be, you know, I don't think we can look at just one measure, but it's, it is one that we have.
And I think the strategic plan gives us an opportunity where we, we were, I mean, I think we were taking, we most certainly were administering surveys after professional learning. But I think we are now being more intention, the strategic plan is causing us to be more intentional about letting that data drive what happens next. And so yes, we started very high. So, you know, we may not be able to replicate that in March.
We had, we had food trucks. Let's just remember that at the first one. So, you know, that's going to be hard to top, but.
I think one of the things that like, just thinking about what the strategic plan itself is, I think we talked about a dashboard. And so I'm just kind of curious, like, would this kind of be within that dashboard to keep track of Target Six?
And I know that's the next deliverable from the strategic planning company. So I think that this is, we can most certainly weave these data points as some of the metrics that people, that we capture and people watch as we move throughout the next five years. Yes.
And that, and that's just one, you know, that's just one aspect of this overall professional development. So yes, we will have those from the sessions that are the division-wide. But we also want to be able to capture, like, the mentoring, for instance, has a program evaluation component to it. You know, instructional coaches give, like I said, they give, they ask for, you know, feedback as well. So I think it'll be just trying to capture all of those different facets of this plan.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm very excited about this and I want to thank you for putting all this together. And I think it looks great and very comprehensive and a lot going on. I want to make sure that we are, you know, there's so much, there's so much content. There's so many different things to cover. I just want to make sure we're also, you know, focusing on wellness for our teaching staff. And, you know, somebody earlier in the meeting mentioned low morale, something. And, you know, it's sometimes hard to know what that's all about, but I think it's really important. I don't know if that's a thing, if that's really what's going on, one person said it. But you know, that this would be, you know, another, another opportunity to sort of, to take a look at that, to see if that's there and, you know, find ways of making sure that we take care of our staff as, as well as we can. But thank you, a big thank you for doing this.
Stories.
So that looks like food trucks, massage tables, all kinds of things.
We had some giveaways.
All of that. I know, dance parties again, absolutely. No, I, yeah, I wanted to say thank you. I thought it was really fun to kind of read through this. Number one, I appreciated, and I just wanted to say, I appreciated seeing the different reports that came up and how they were tied to our strategic plan and just how that, that's looking. So I appreciate that in this meeting and the agenda today. So thank you for that. But also embedded in, with what you offered, there were so many points that did touch on what the group that worked on the strategic plan, you know, really wanted to see in that. So it was nice and it, it'll be interesting because, you know, like you said, it's going to be important to be able to circle back and, and to get that feedback and see that, you know, people aren't just attending, but that you are able to apply it. And that's, you know, we hear that a lot. So whether it's, you know, something different as far as literacy is presented, you know, the next time. But anyway, I really did appreciate all of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Isley. I think this is a great thing, all this professional learning going on. I just have one quick question. In some of the professional learning activities, will teachers be able to acquire recertification points?
So yeah, all of these activities over these days, they earn points. And the same thing for, schools are able to submit for, like, if they do a professional learning session after school or something like that, like they're able to turn that in as well. So yes, all of these, all of these sessions, like from the Palooza, people earn points from all that.
Great, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Isley. And the next thing is 9.6. Dr. Odie will give the enrollment update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. Good evening again. Tonight I am going to be sharing a presentation for my colleague Kim Powell, who is not here this evening. So I'll be presenting it on her behalf. This presentation provides a snapshot of our enrollment and elementary class size numbers as of August 28th. So what you will see here, the blue chart on this page shows the enrollment numbers by school and grade level in Power School as of again, August 28th. The green chart on the bottom shows new student registrations in progress in schoolment as of that same date. The total enrollment and new student registrations in process, in process was, in progress was 4556, 4,556. This snapshot is an increase over our official fall membership numbers last year. And we will look at how the numbers compare by school at the conclusion of this presentation. Next slide, please. So before we look at the comparison of this August 28th snapshot with last year's fall membership, this slide shows the elementary class sizes as of August 28th by school and by grade level. These calculations assume all registrations in process convert to actual enroll, enrollments. So it considers the numbers from both that blue and green chart that were on the previous slide. Enrollment changes during the summer required reassignment of some staff between and within a few elementary schools in order to achieve optimal class size across all of the elementary schools. Greenbrier had a net staff reduction while Burnley Moran and Jackson Vaya both needed additional staffing. And we've made sure that happened for them. Enrollment projections can be challenging overall. And it's even more challenging to forecast where the forecasted elementary population will land across those six elementary schools within our 10 square miles. We like to avoid reassignments, but it is sometimes necessary and appropriate among the elementary schools to address population shifts within the city. The state sets targets for grades K through three based on at-risk factors. You'll see those K-three targets. I call them K-three class size reductions. They're on the right. We try not to have the classes go over those numbers in kindergarten, first, second and third grade.
Can I ask a couple of questions here?
Sure.
I don't mean to interrupt, like, actually I do mean to interrupt. And I just feel like this is the appropriate place to ask this question. So that's why I'm going to ask.
Okay.
So I apologize. First of all, I don't think I've ever recalled seeing decimals in these particular charts before. So can we round in the future and not use decimals? I feel like decimals is really an awkward way to talk about people.
What it, what it means, Ms. McKeever is, and I, yeah, I, I have seen these decimals and we can certainly look at that. But what it means is like Burnley Moran and the kindergarten classes, some of the kindergarten classes have 18 kids, some of them have 19.
No, I, I know what a decimal means.
No, but, but if we say 19, then you're thinking all of the classes have 19. We can certainly talk about that. But that's, that's the way the numbers are typically presented.
But okay, and so then my understanding of the Clark K-three grant is the, it was 17 is my, what my understanding, it was not 19, it was 17. So that's why I'm confused about the number 19 in the K-three target.
It's been 19 since I've been here for three years. So maybe it changed. Yeah, it does change.
It does change.
Every few years, I think they.
It does change.
Okay. So maybe it'd be more accurate to have the, instead of having a decimal, it may be accurate to have like, there are three classrooms of kindergarteners of one with 18, one with 19, one with 18, or one with 17, one with 18, one with 19, you know, like just to be more accurate. And I understand the concern, like, I just feel like it's really hard to make policy decisions on this, these type, like on this aggregate number. When, I mean, again, these numbers are not that bad. Like I've seen worse. These are manageable numbers, but it's really hard to make it, I think, on this kind of aggregate data rather than specific classroom. And maybe you already did that. I think you did, no?
Because the only unintended, I guess the only unintended of rounding it up is you may calculate that there's an extra student in the
grade level.
It's going to push the number of students up in the grade level. Like if there are three teachers, you would, you're going to, you're going to add an extra student where there's not a student. That would be the only unintended consequence of doing that.
I will share that Ms. Powell shares a document with us in ELT that does have more specifics about the, the number of classes and the kids in the classes. So we use that to make decisions. I think she condensed this here for this presentation.
Yeah. And that's what I was thinking. I mean, we could most certainly display that chart. It just, for in our meetings, it becomes, is that legal? It'll be, it's illegal. Instead of using like a regular piece of paper, it would be a legal sheet of paper that's very long that would require just a little bit more interpreting. long, that would require just a little bit more interpreting because it would say, to your point, it would say Burnley Moran kindergarten, three teachers. It still has a decimal, it still has a decimal on it, but it indicates how many, it just, the chart becomes really long, the chart that we actually work for, work from, I'm sorry.
I believe it also has the total number of kids in the grade level, and then we see this as well.
Yes.
Again, like I understand we're adding a teacher at Jackson Villa on Monday, and I understand we've added a couple to like that, and that's like where we are, like, or where we will be next week. And I guess my, and so I don't really feel like this is a very urgent year in terms of adding teachers because we've already done it, or we will be doing it, or we're in the process of doing it. And since I won't be here next year, I'm basically telling the board that you can ask for more data. And this is not very helpful data if you are looking and you have a bunch of parents emailing you for it, and you can just ask for more data because this is not going to be helpful for you to make an analysis of whether you should add a teacher or not. If you're going to be critically examining data.
I would encourage, I mean, so I agree. I mean, we can most certainly, we, we work from a very long spreadsheet. So we can add that. I think that in most instances, hopefully, if a parent has a concern about the number of students, the principal has communicated that information, like the Burnham Moran that was communicated back in August, Mr. Dr. Malone, he communicated the kindergarten change. So it's just a matter of, in some cases, moving a teacher from a grade or getting someone in. So hopefully, if there is someone that still has a concern, that that has been addressed. But all of those numbers, with the exception of Burnham Moran, that's on its way. And then Jackson Villa, the kindergarten change will happen on next Monday.
And, and just to be clear, these numbers do look good because it's been fixed.
Or it will be fixed.
It will be fixed. Yes. It's, we're, like you said, we're in the process of, of making sure these numbers, class sizes are manageable. If we had have shown you that, if the school board meeting had have been last week or week before, then you would have seen the data that we were seeing that helped us make the decisions that we did make.
Right. Yeah. So I think that's very helpful. I just, yeah, I, I felt like there was one more that, and I do, do, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And what may also be helpful is that, that sheet that we use, I could link that sheet to you, I mean, so that you can see what we see in real time. I mean, because there's definitely, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving pieces. So I think that that would be helpful for you all, too.
I think I mentioned this when we met earlier. My concern is less about this chart. It's more of the registration enrollment at the end, you know, back in May and over the summer. And so I want to have a discussion, including Beth Chuck and our principals and our kindergarten teams of how can we, division wide, enhance and improve our kindergarten camp and our registration so that our community knows that it's time to register, so that we have a better, accurate understanding of who is going to show up at our building more than, you know, five days before school starts or even the day school starts because it's too late at this point. You know, we're doing the best we can. Our teachers are being flexible, principals are being flexible, parents are being understanding, but we should not be starting the school year with 29 kids in a kindergarten classroom.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. We can always work to enhance our communication process to try to remind parents of five-year-olds that kindergarten is going to be starting. I just do remember as a principal, the, the work that goes into kindergarten, sneak a peek and orientation and all of those things. And then there's still families that come at the end of the summer to register. So we'll continue to do that work to, and by the way, our, our six schools, all of them do have kindergarten camps and they reach out. It's, we just.
Except you don't know about it unless you have a kid who is already enrolled in the system.
Okay. Yep. Well, then we have work to do. Absolutely. All right. Shall I continue?
Yes, I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for the question. So I'll just reiterate that you can see on that chart that all of the elementary classes are well below the state targets even before considering other personnel such as instructional assistants, which are also factored into the actual state calculation for the K three class sizes. So this slide here, this chart shows how the official fall enrollment numbers from the end of September 22 compared to our snapshot numbers from August 28. It's not necessarily apples to apples comparison, but you can see at this point, we're on track for an enrollment increase of about one percent. The pre-pandemic growth bubble that went through the elementary and middle schools is now concentrated at 10th grade and to a lesser extent at 11th grade, as you can see over at the right. That smaller chart on the right shows a snapshot comparison by grade for CHS.
Do you have any idea what's going on at Clark and Greenbrier? Like, is there just like some kind of movement out there? Like, what, what, what happened there? Does anybody? I don't think Dr. Odie like is an expert on the Clark and Greenbrier enrollment. I was just wondering like.
No, but we, we have a feeling there will be more Clark students at some point because of the affordable housing that is happening there. But right now, we do see that there's a reduction there for those two schools. A pretty significant, relatively speaking, when you look at the other schools.
I know that, if I may, just, there was movement of some families out of Hearthwood, I think, last summer, just based on whether it be vouchers or, I mean, there was, so I had raised some questions about that to some people. And then also just wondering if, yeah, just with the construction going on over by Clark, if people have had to move, you know, out to the county while that's going on. I mean, it's hard to know, but I know that, that with Hearthwood, some of our families, I think, were, were kind, kind of had to move, so may have ended up in the county.
Well, we will, of course, continue to monitor growth, particularly at the elementary level, as we continue looking at population shifts that you're talking about here and what's happening with the affordable housing projects that are now underway. We'll keep monitoring. Our current projects and construction will necessitate reevaluation of the six elementary school zones and revisiting the growth and capacity study work that was done in 2016 and 2017. So we know that's on the horizon. And I think that that is the last slide for this presentation. Are there any additional questions that I could answer for you tonight?
Start into the left. Stories.
Yeah, thank you. So I was curious what our thoughts are on maybe including K-Tech students on this going forward, since K-Tech is part of CCS and that is a strategic plan goal, so that we could kind of track year to year, the increase in students there.
In terms of, it wouldn't go with our enrollment, but we can most certainly get an update from her in terms, her meaning, Dr. Holtz, in terms of program enrollment, what the numbers, because that won't play into our funding, into our enrollment snapshot. Because, because that would be, yeah.
And I mean, I know we get that at K-Tech. I mean, that's part of the report that we get there, but considering that one of our goals is to increase Charlottesville City Schools, the students, you know, each year. I'd just be curious. I mean, I don't think it would take.
So I'm saying, yeah, so I'm saying, I agree with you. We can, so we can monitor the current enrollment. It just wouldn't, if we added to enrollment, it would be, those would be duplicates because those are Charlottesville students.
Maybe it can be added as a last slide, just here's, here's who we have at K-Tech, just so we can monitor our growth and increase in Charlottesville City.
These are the programs, and these are the students who were enrolled. These were the students enrolled in September of 2023, and these are the students who enrolled in September 2024. So it went next year this time.
Okay, Dr. Craft.
Yeah. I was just wondering about Lugo McGinnis. And, you know, I don't know what our enrollment is there. And as I understood it, I, I thought that we were maybe hoping to increase enrollment at Lugo McGinnis, but I'm not even sure now what the target is for enrollment there and where we are now. So I, I don't know if you have that.
I can speak to the la- last week when I looked, there were 17 students that were enrolled there. But we have several students who are opting to self-enroll at Lugo McGinnis. It, there's a great program there. We've got a great leader, Mr. Trotter, who's doing some amazing things with the students. And there were two students today that came before me that were interested in going because they, they really preferred a smaller setting, which we try to keep those class sizes small. As we know, it is a wonderful space, but it's a small space. So we do want to be very careful with how many students we do place there.
Seven, seventeen is quite low.
That's low. Yeah, we know that we have been up to 30 previously. So we know that we can at least get there.
Right.
So we're, we're working to see who this is the best fit for.
Right.
So we start it small.
And that has typically been the starting point.
And then it grows throughout the year.
Yes, ma'am.
And do the, do students typically stay there all year once they go there? Or is it just kind of in and out?
They typically stay the year unless they're placed there at a disciplinary review hearing where they are given a specific timeframe to be there. They still, you know, and I will say that many students who were there last year, who could have requested to return to the high school, opted to remain at LMA because they realized that it was best for them.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Mossberg. Ms. Dooly.
Just one more. This is a request, I think, for next month, is if we can get an update on how our English language learners factor into these enrollment numbers. I don't know when that report comes. Is that next month?
It should be coming up.
I know we usually have an ESL presentation. I just can't remember which month it is. But see, are you fine with it being when Dr. Faust does the presentation? Okay.
Ms. Steve, do you have a question?
I was just thinking that, just with respect to LMA, there might be some useful, like a use, like we might want to have a report on, maybe even a work session, work style, work session style type conversation around LMA with Mr. Trotter, like what he's doing, how it's going, well, how we can support him. Maybe it's related to budget priorities, things like that. Maybe, I don't know, we can just get introduced to him and see what his vision is. No pressure. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. So are there any more questions, Dr. Odie? Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you so much.
So moving right along, based on our agenda, it's 10.1, Board Response to Written Reports. I think they've all been recorded and duly noted. So we have another opportunity at this time for members of the community to come forth and speak. You will have three minutes. When you come forth to the podium, please state your name and your address. So this time I'm going to pivot before in, in-room folks, I'll pivot to the Zoom room to see if we have anybody in the Zoom room waiting.
Yes, we do have someone and that person is listed as Zionna Bryant. And Zionna, I'm going to promote you to panelist and should be able to unmute and speak for your three-minute time.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Can't hear you.
Try one more time.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Zionna Bryant, Charlottesville resident. I'm calling about a couple of things, one being about the volunteering. I saw that there was a call put out to the community for volunteering and I've donated some clothes to the CHS clothes closet. And I'm wondering if there could be maybe like a clear community call similar to that of the volunteering list, so that those who want to give are able to do that and know what that process looks like. I also saw that one of the cheerleading coaches at Buford was putting out a request to ask for like sanitary and hygiene products for like the Buford cheerleaders. So I know that there are people who are like in the UVA student community who would love to support and also community members. I think that if those things are posted, I think it would be easier for folks to do that. So I just wanted to put that on your radar. And additionally, I wanted to ask a little bit, a question about the kind of disciplinary processes throughout the school district. I know we have a zero tolerance policy. And I guess my question is, what is the kind of status of the restorative justice practices, if any at all? What do they look like? I think that that is something that I'm really concerned with, especially as I'm seeing how suspensions are handled and kind of given out at CHS. And I understand when it is, you know, warranted, it makes sense. But I also wonder, what are some of the kind of steps in between handing out a three or five-day suspension? Like, what, what are some of those interventions that are happening? Are they uniform across the board? Are they kind of up to the discretion of the assistant principal or head principal at the time, who may be paying attention to the matter? I think those are definitely important. And as we kind of shift to this like CSA kind of patrol, paw monitor style of like discipline, especially in the high school, I would love to hear more about what those processes look like and how the zero tolerance policy is aligned with the anti-racist work that's been done within the district over the past few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Is there anyone else in the Zoom room? Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak at this time? All right, thank you. Now we'll have comments from the board. And Ms. Torres, I will start with you.
Okay, thank you. Just want to say thank you to everybody who has sent emails and who has come up for public comments. I always want to appreciate voices and, and feedback that we receive. Also, just wanted to announce, I was looking at a newsletter from Piedmont Regional Education Program. And for those who are familiar or those who aren't familiar, we do have, within the school, we have what's called the Special Education Advisory Committee. And I believe that our first meeting will be the 29th. It's slated for possibly September 29th, but I just wanted to just remind parents what this is about in our community. Basically, it's an opportunity for parents to get together and to talk about your student who, who might have different needs or different types of supports within the school system, to show up, get support from other parents within the division. Also, there are school board reps and there are administrative reps on that committee. And then also to work together to just hear what types of supports or what other possibly sessions that we might be able to hold on site. And then also, there is, like I said, the Parent Resource Center that offers a lot of regional supports to, to students and parents with IEPs or that have different types of needs. So we'll, we'll be kind of pushing that out. I will try and be a better voice up here to remind people of when, when those meetings are happening. There are parents that are at each school that, and, and it's open to anybody who wants to come. And then I'm looking at Ms. Raznick, who, who has her hand up. Okay, so September 20th, and I believe, I don't know if we're doing it different this year, but we offered it in-person and then a hybrid, so that you could either come in-person or log in and follow along. But there's different topics. So again, that's So again, that's the Special Ed Advisor Committee, September twentieth, five o'clock. Is that correct? Five thirty. All right, thank you. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Craft.
Yeah, well, um I would also like to thank a lot of the people who have written to us and talked to us about uh the cell phone policy, and I'd especially like to um express my appreciation for the teachers. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, now now I'm on. Um anyway, sorry about that. I'd like to express my uh special appreciation to our teachers uh who have been working very hard on this. Uh you know, and and who are who are here, who have joined us, who are working with us. And I just feel like it's um, you know, it's 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 something big and something really important. So I know we we might have some differences about exactly how we go about this. Um but I also just want to keep our focus on the the big goal, you know, which is really to help our kids um sort of relearn some of the skills that they maybe have lost because of social media and cell phones. And uh you know, and the opportunities for engagement and the opportunities for community building within our schools that I think this policy will um will 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 provide those opportunities and open some of those doors. So um I just hope we can stay the course and, you know, keep our eyes on that big prize and on these kids' brains, um because we really need their brains to continue to grow and develop in 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 the best ways. And uh we need for their emotional well being to to also grow and improve. So anyway, just uh we'll keep working on it, and uh we are all one community, and sort of that's where we're headed. But uh big thanks to to our teachers who are in so involved with this and care so much. Thank you.
Ms. Morseburg.
Uh I just want to take the time to thank all of the uh teachers and staff and school admin, um people I see in the room right now that I've been seeing out directing traffic and pointing kids in which directions to go, and it's been hot, so hot. And everyone's just, you know, putting their best foot forward. So um I just want to thank everybody and um hope that everyone's having a good start to the year.
Mr. Morris.
Hi, thank you. Um I just have a couple of things to say. One is um just to remind that I would like to see report on the on LMA, on LMA and on the Buford UVA partnership. I also really find that it, as a school board member who has two kids, one at Walker now, one at Buford, it's like just unbelievable how important it is to have kids in schools to kind of know how um what's happening on the ground. I just, I just can't believe how important it is. Like, I don't know, for so long I didn't have any kids at Buford or at Walker. And so it's just been really eye opening and helpful, and um I don't know, it just makes me a better school board member, I think. Um if slightly more challenging, so sorry about that. Um but also, um but it also makes me a really difficult parent because uh I'm like, yeah, you got to keep your cell phone away. And if you get caught, that's going to be a problem. So he's not getting caught. Um or if he is, it's going to be a problem. Anyway, I just really want the the teachers at the high school um and 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 the students at this high school to understand that what we are doing at, hopefully, at Walker and at Buford is really setting the stage for the future. And I just hope that um, you know, what's happening now is 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 really hard. But like, I know that it will pay dividends in the future with our kids um who are coming up. And I just can't emphasize to you enough how um important and the dramatic the results are at the dinner, you know, at the, you know, just in socializing for with your kids. And so I just, for me, it's been really helpful. So I appreciate all the work that everybody's doing here at the high school and in school in general um to keep this policy going. So thank you. Um and I think that's it. Um thank you so much. Appreciate everybody. Take care.
Okay, I just want to say thank you to everyone who emailed, um spoke this afternoon. I tried my best to keep up with all the emails. I think I answered and responded to all of them. They were coming in fast and furious. So thank you all for for your input and your insights and your support and your encouragement. Teachers, welcome aboard. You're back. The kids are back. So I'm hoping that you all have gotten off to a good start. Um it's what, three weeks in? And I know that um it's some adjustment for our staff and students with the cell phone policy. But in the final analysis, it is going to all work out. I truly believe that. So just hang in there. It's going to get better. Dr. Curly.
Thank you all. Uh thank you all for attending and hanging in there with us. Um when I was about twelve years old, um I sat on a pew, and I remember someone saying that we are all imperfect people. Um and so I think that we, what I know is that we have to recognize that we are all imperfect people, but we are perfectly designed for this work. And I do believe that every day, and I I believe that we're surrounded by the right people um doing the work here in Charlottesville City Schools, that we have been perfectly designed for this work. And so we don't always have all the answers. Um but um what I do know is that we all are prioritizing the learning of every single student here. Um and I think that if we keep that in the forefront of everything that we do, that every student matters, every decision that we make matters, um that we touch every student here regardless of our role. And that we should, we're not bigger than our position. We we are all equal here, and we all want the exact same thing. So I am looking forward to a great school year. I am so ecstatic at the manner in which everyone has shown up to do the work. Um and we know, we know that the work wasn't easy when we signed up for it, uh but when we see those faces, that's why we do what we do. So I'm just going to end by saying that I appreciate every single person, student, staff, family. I appreciate you all. Um and I will continue to love and lead with love, um you all. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Swift, you're up with the work session wrap up.
So. Um we will have an ESL update in November, along with a literacy update, because I know PALS was mentioned, so that will be in November. Um we'll provide you with an LMA update as well as the Buford Lab School. Did I miss anything?
I would just like to add the COVID sick days as like a thing to add to the update, plus, you know, just something to talk about in the future.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Smith. Now, for, before I get to the upcoming meetings, I just want to remind board members, we received an invite for the PDF CA Afterwork Get Together. They will be donating a prize, so I would recommend, highly recommend you come. That's all I'm going to say about that. Our next upcoming uh meeting will be October the fifth, here at five o'clock in the Bogert T. Reeves Media Center. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.